All right.
Well, call this meeting to order. We'd like to welcome Corey from Channel 32 and grateful to have him here with us all the time. And we have additions and/or an agenda to adopt. Are there any additions anyone would like to add to this agenda?
I can adopt the agenda for you.
Okay, the mayor has made a motion to adopt the agenda as outlined. All in favor? Perfect. We have Mr. Danny Melvin from Emergency Services and his sidekick Spencer. And we'd like to invite you to come on up Danny and Spencer. If you feel the need to kind of hold Danny up, go ahead. Danny's here to talk to us about fire inspections and the QMP. So Danny, you can feel free to take your mask off.
Want me to start?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I'll preface if you don't mind, Councilor Salk.
Yeah, go ahead.
So in your package, you have a copy of what's called the Fire Quality Management Plan. The town is responsible to take care of inspections related to fire. We delegate that to the fire department. And the QMP outlines essentially how we, what the parameters are that we've delegated that and what they need to do. Danny and I have had numerous conversations over a lot of years about issues around fire inspections. And it's become more common recently with COVID where businesses are required to have their fire occupancy numbers. So they know how many people they can have in a building. And we've run into some situations where we've seen buildings that while Danny would be happy to give them an occupancy number, that requires a fire inspection that they likely will not pass. And so they're in a very difficult position. And we've tried, we've dealt with a couple and I think we've worked through it okay. But this point's always been a bit of an issue for me that one of the things in our QMP is that any type of inspection is on request or complaint. So under the QMP, Danny can't, can't just go into a building and say, hey, you're getting a fire inspection today because there wasn't a request for one or a complaint about one. And that creates some limitations to what he can do. We know of buildings that have issues. We know of buildings with contraventions, whether deliberate or otherwise. And I'd like Danny to speak to some of those challenges that he faces when it comes to inspections. And I have a couple thoughts, and I know Danny does too, of some things that as a council, politically, we can maybe look to put in place, or changes we can recommend to the QMP that might give him some greater autonomy and authority when it comes to fire inspections. So I don't know if that summarized well for you?
Yeah, that's it. Good night.
Okay. Just before we get started, Danny, this QMP is with the town, the county, and the town of McGrath. Is that correct, Jeff?
Correct.
Because we have more than one partner in this dance.
Yep.
Okay. Danny, feel free to take your mask off. You're the lucky one.
You really want to see this? Anyway. Yeah, so thanks, Jeff and councilors. Well, thanks for inviting me. There is some ongoing challenges with, with fire inspections to begin with. Due to COVID, the occupancy load has changed. And the actual health order exceeds the number of people you can have occupancy wise, more than it takes precedence over the fire code. For example, ours occupancy load from the Safety Codes Council includes everybody. And under the health order, it's the workers don't count. So it's kind of an issue. And I did push that up to the province and it's an ongoing challenge. And it's way above my pay grade. So the folks at the province and the fire commissioner's office, Safety Codes Council are, it's an ongoing thing and it has not yet to be resolved. So in that, there's been a couple of issues, like Jeff said, with some businesses wanting to know their occupancy. And then that triggers, obviously, we have to go. And we can point out, because we're invited, that kind of clicks or warrants presently for a fire inspection. I can say back in 2007, it was a different, coded differently, where it was required as part of an annual is what it was at the time. And then chiefs changed. I want to say, I want to say it was 2010, it was changed to what we currently have. This was May, I think is what the date is on this document, April, April 19th of 2010. So the new chief came in and changed it to this, quite frankly, in my opinion, is the lowest common denominator you can get. So until somebody complains or we're requested to go, we don't go. So my suggestion has been, and with Jeff, having some consultation with him, suggesting that when their business licenses are renewed or due, it warrants, triggers mandated to have a fire inspection. It's that way, when we do that, and part of this code, it says we have 60 days. I don't know, do they have copies of this?
Yes, they all have a copy.
Yeah, it's a lot of fluff in there. But basically, if we go to the definitions every 12 months, then we have a 60 day window to actually go in and do the inspections and trigger that, that process.
Can I ask something, maybe of Jeff and yourself? What would be so difficult on the business license itself to print there what your occupancy is?
That's a good idea.
That way they don't have to look for it.
Right. That's right. If they do some upgrades or renovations, by definition, anything over $5,000, whether it's volunteer time, materials, or whatever, requires an inspection. Currently, that does not happen.
But that doesn't mean that it could not have an inspection, as you suggest, within so many years or so many months.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting. If we did it every year, so when their businesses' licenses are renewed, then that warrants us to go in and do it. Because if things change, we should catch it.
Yeah.
Businesses change occupancy loads depending on renovations, it could change, and the dynamics.
Counselor Brown?
So, sorry, I don't know an awful lot about...
We're looking for volunteers.
Yeah. Thanks. I appreciate the offer. Spencer's, I'm sure, would say no. Anyway, does it cost the business? So the business is now paying for the business license? Is there an added cost for you to come in and do that?
That's basically at your discretion. That's something that we need to discuss. Currently, we don't charge it. We, under contract with Parks Canada, we go out there as part of our contract and do inspections for all the businesses every two years. So, no, at this point, no.
Because it, sorry, if I can, because it's, I mean, it's your time and your money.
Right.
So as a business owner...
Actually, your money.
Sorry. Right. But you understand what I'm saying.
Absolutely. Yeah. There is cost of doing business. It could be a budgetary thing. But at this point, I don't foresee it being an issue. I would suggest the, currently Spencer and I are the kind of the key players and the Safety Codes officers. We have two others on the wings where we just need to bring them up and be more comfortable in doing the inspections. So I believe we've kind of, this will be labor intensive.
Yeah.
So yeah, there is going to be a cost of it. But I would suggest if we were going to do this, we'd do it for a year and see what that looks like. And then budget wise, we could re-review that.
Thank you.
So that answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
I agree with that, Counselor Court.
So can I just ask just a quick question? When you go into a business and you do your evaluation, what kind of things are not in place that fail that inspection?
Means of egress is a big one. The way to get out. I know of two, and it's not a big deal. And the beauty of having Safety Codes officers within our own jurisdiction rather than letting over, giving it back to the province, because that's another option. When the province does come to do it, I don't think you're going to have a lot of leeway there. So means of egress is one, fire extinguishers is another, the restaurants, alarm systems, suppression systems in the kitchen. That's mainly the, the big ones. And wiring is, is another one.
Counselor Court?
You mentioned the wiring. There's a number, obviously, what it fit in is, I don't think, there's a number of empty buildings downtown that they're just sitting there waiting to...
Right.
Because the wiring can't be all that great. And I don't know if there's, if there's electricity into those buildings or not. But that is a concern. And is there any way that we can even have those looked up? Because they're not occupied. So I guess it really wouldn't fit into this.
Right. It's kind of the code of the day to the, the age of the building. So it may or may not pass. Depending on, the big one is if they do renovations, then it brings, you have to bring it up to the, the current standard.
I would imagine, I would imagine you're also looking for cardboard or wood pellet being tucked up around the entrance or whatever.
Yeah.
Now, talking about that, in a community where I lived before in BC, there was inspection of houses, households regarding this very issue, cardboard that would be there, or any flammable that would be around the, the property. And there was inspection. I don't remember how often. I remember living there a good 15 years. And I remember at least one inspection that was done. And I come and I, I look for those type of things that could be dangerous to your home.
Right.
Propane tanks, cardboard.
There was one challenge in town. You said propane tank. That just triggers.
Right. So I'm wondering if in time, that is your intent to have that? Or is it only on request that you would imagine that should try?
Well, I would suggest if that was a case, it's not my intent to go into private dwellings because they are private.
Right.
It's more where the public can occupy. And there's a safety concern for the general public.
Right.
Currently. Unless you guys mandate for us to do that, then we'll do that.
Just curious to know how it is. It's so different depending on where you live.
Exactly.
If you want to elaborate more.
Well, I just wanted to add something. Unless there was another question, by all means, let that, okay. Danny and I, we've talked about this a bit. And, and we've, we've debated this. If we keep everything on request or by complaint, essentially saying you have consent from the owner to go in the building, then is that when we look at the business license option, we essentially tell everyone, in order to renew your business license, you must consent to a fire inspection annually, right? So that was one option. Although, we don't have to do that if we simply change, we can also change this to be annually. My only concern, Danny, and I'd like you to speak to this, is if we change the QMP that requires an annual one, I, I do worry about the, the manpower at the detachment to do every commercially zoned building every year by rule. And is that going to be onerous versus we require consent from all business licenses that at your discretion, you could go in? I, I wouldn't mind a little bit of...
That's actually not a bad idea. If, if you word it like that, as far as you are required, required is one and consent is another. So you must consent. It's a different implication.
When you must consent, it's required.
We wouldn't have to change this. Right. The beauty of this and having our own Safety Codes officers is we can get along. I mean, we need to get along with the people that we live around. And, and we can work with them rather than have to be so stringent as to the letter of the law and make things click.
So just a thought, Jeff. With respect to getting our other two dance partners to change all this, is that, I don't know that'll be problematic, but you know those...
I, I do actually. And I, I don't, I do think we have a challenge getting our partners to require an annual mandatory. I do. One is because I can't speak to, well, well, the county pulls from, it's the same Danny and Spencer is who it is. But McGrath is a different group of folks. And I couldn't speak for a second about the qualifications of Safety Code officers in that community.
They don't have any.
Okay. So Danny can speak to the qualifications of Safety Code officers in that community. That's why we were talking about maybe if we looked at, the business license was a consent for an inspection, then we actually don't have to change the QMP.
Right.
But we, well, and we need to interpret that because it's actually request or complaint. It's not consent.
Right.
So we could say you are requesting an inspection by...
That sounds a little...
You know. But the other thing I do want to mention that I think is important, and we'll use Raymond as an example, they don't have, they, they let the province do the fire inspections in that community, maybe all the Safety Codes inspections.
They do indeed. Yep.
And it is much more rigid. So if Danny goes into a building here and it's like, oh, you got just a laundry list of problems, but we're going to work with you. You know, we know you, we know your situation. We're going to give you a little extra time here. We're going to give you some guidance here. Now we have, it is important, I think, that our local guys do it. Because otherwise, man, it's like, here's your list, you're closed till further notice. And when 100% of it's done, call us. And I don't want that. By going to compulsory inspections, I don't want to see that happen down Main Street. That's the concern. So, you know, I'd like an approach where Danny and Spencer, hey, you do have five or six problems here. And this one's really expensive. We get that. So we're going to give you a year on that one, you know, or, or something, or mitigate it by doing this and then do this. I, I don't know. But I think we need to keep that local discretion. We just need to figure out, either we approach our partners about changing it to annually, or we look for a way to get consent and permission from the property owners locally.
So perhaps we could leave it in your capable hands with administration, you and Danny?
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So Danny, correct if I'm wrong, but you said that you're, you're under contract with Parks Canada.
Right.
To do inspections every two years. If that's the case, why would we want them every year if the federal government is requesting for every two years?
Why would you do what the federal government's doing?
Says the retired federal government.
Do the exact opposite of what they're doing.
I'm, I'm just saying, if a person, most, most of the businesses here, if, if they do an inspection and, and everything looks really good, why would you come back year after year? Why not every year?
You can set it up where, for example, motels, I would, and schools, I would anticipate it would be a good idea to inspect those every year. Because you find deficiencies every time.
Further, Counselor, I think with Danny and Spencer, they probably have a list of problem children that they want to go and check on every year.
Yeah.
Am I correct, Danny?
I'm sure of that. I'm sure of that.
Okay.
You do have the discretion to discriminate between classes of properties too, right? So if we really want to get in the weeds on it, we can, that we have that ability.
But I think it would be, who, the two of you and, you know, however you want to work this out to come back to council with a recommendation on what we should do going forward. We kind of have a flavor for this. I don't think anyone has any other questions, do they?
I mean, we're, we're interpreting correctly that there is an appetite to increase the fire inspections in our commercial sector through the QMP. We just need to figure out, there's not going to be pushback if we come and say, hey, we've got this figured out now. But we just want to make sure that's okay with you collectively.
Maybe there's a chance for us to like rent Danny out to the town of McGrath and make some money at this.
There's other words for that.
Okay. I have no opinion. I learned how to say that. So.
Okay. Any other questions, councilors?
Thank you.
If not, Danny.
I have a question. Just a quick question, Danny. Who does the home inspections? And how often do they, are they required? Is that the insurance companies?
Oftentimes, my insurance company came in and did their own inspection for different reasons. But, you know, drains are in place, wrapped water hoses on your washer dryer, stuff like that. Right now, it's not in the quality management plan or required because it is a private dwelling. It's not occupied by the public.
I can speak a little bit on new construction. Park Enterprises will do the electrical, gas, structural, and occupancy on new construction.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Danny.
You bet.
I'll touch base with you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
Okay. Counsel, we have the minutes of the maybe fourth council committee, the whole, someone would like to make a motion to adopt those. Mayor's making a motion to adopt those minutes. All in favor? Good. Thank you. Bylaw policy, we have nothing there. Other business? 7A indoor rec facility. Jeff, take it away.
Sure. So part one and two kind of go together here. Last meeting, we talked about assigning those reserve accounts to get to a million. I, I gave you three very different, well, subtly different drafts of a letter. So why I grouped these together is in conversation with Mr. Brad Beazer and then Dr. Clark, we were having some discussions around what works for your grant writer, what are some things they would be okay with. And, and both agreed that if you wish to do this, and you may not, but if you wish to, the value of land servicing, all those things that would go along with getting the site ready and finished for this building are acceptable within the million dollar envelope. Now, you have a resolution that you may want to debate the intent of it. That's fine. But from their point of view, they're fine if the letters to them says, we've got a million dollars worth of cash and in-kind contributions. Now, we don't know the exact value of those in-kind contributions at this point. That's why one of your letters is, I don't know what the word is. It's, it's saying that there's a million dollars between these categories of things. But I didn't assign, I don't know what the paving is going to be exactly. I don't know what stormwater management will be precisely. So I, I wrote one of them that was kind of open ended that way, but should still satisfy the needs for the grant. You need to decide as a group whether that satisfies your intent as council. And then we can prepare those resolutions for next week. Because the, the pickleball group who's doing the grant writing to the CFEP large stream, that is due June 15th. And so I'd like to be able to, and I think you would too, we'd like to be able to get them a letter that shows that million dollars in contribution, however you deem appropriate that it's made up.
Perfect. Thanks, Jeff. Mayor?
All right, Counselor Salk, I know that you and I have had some personal different view on this issue regarding the original motion. So let me talk about it a little bit. So originally, when the million dollar came in the picture, Counselor Brown was the one that said, let's reserve a million dollar for the, for the rec center. And those days was really considered the rec facility and $500,000 for the golf course. And that day, pictures, renditions were given. Counselor Court had a picture of a 9,000 square foot or so building. When we voted, we voted with that in mind. So that was fair and square. We kind of had an idea what it was that we were going for. That building has changed over time from 9,000, 12,000, 19,000, and possibly more than that. And that was the nature of things. They evolved. And what evolved with it was our understanding first that the contribution were going to be made from the counties, the school, and our town. That also has evolved by the nature of things. When we voted on that original motion, we did not have the budget on the front of us, nor did we know what the reserve were going to be, at which level, nor did we know whether it would be used. So in hindsight, I would say that collectively, we did not foresee that there would not be a million dollar available in cash for that. When I realized that, that is when I looked at it from a different angle and proposed that we could use in-kind to make up the difference. It was not to be disingenuous, as you call me, Counselor. It was simply because I'm facing the reality and trying to find the way to do it, make it work with what we have. And since the group is writing a grant that allow us to provide in-kind, which in-kind means cash at the end of the day, because somehow you have to put a value, the same thing when a blood tribe gives us money in-kind, in cash to make up for all in-kind contribution to the power. It's the same kind of idea. So if that's satisfied with having that type of contribution, why should we reject it, even if in hindsight, collectively, we genuinely thought we could come up with a million dollar? But there are other priority of council and we cannot deny them. Therefore, I really support the idea and encourage that group that is fundraising to have a letter, as Jeff said, one million dollar made up of cash and of in-kind. And let's not be specific, because as you say, we cannot put a dollar amount, true dollar amount, is going to be another resolution that would not have the true figures at the end of the day. But the million dollar is still there. So Counselor, that's what, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I should call you Mr. Chair. I don't mind being called disingenuous, but I don't appreciate not being able to change your position as a politician when the evidence is in the front of you and unrefutable. And therefore, I really feel it's better to change your position and explain why, rather than to show bias towards a position that you cannot really truly support at the end of the day.
Okay. Well, two things I might just say in reply, Mayor. One is, you're talking about a motion that was made several months ago. And I'm referring to a motion that I made just a few weeks ago. And the motion that I made was that it was a million bucks to come from reserves. Now, having said all that, and having thought through this and discussed this with Jeff, if the fundraising group is comfortable with the letters, any of them, the first letter that Jeff has drafted there, which doesn't specify amounts, or just says money, in-kind, land.
Cash.
Cash. Yeah. Like I said, cash, whatever. I'm comfortable with that one. So, counsel?
Do we have to rescind?
No.
Motion? Or we can just say, this is...
Yeah, go ahead. If I might, Mr. Chair, what, depending on how you land on this today, you can't make any resolutions today. But what I would do is, we would prepare formally the letter that you're most comfortable with. And then we would prepare the motions. For example, in my opinion, and I want to have some discussion here tonight, and, and I'm just, I'm anticipating what you would want to do collectively, that we would still make a motion to transfer the $577,000 from Recreation Master Plan to indoor rec facility, for example. I still think you would want to make that motion next week.
Yes.
And so the cash portion would be known.
Yeah.
That would be, I mean, to us, not so much to the letter to CFET, but that's not as relevant. So yes, I don't think you need to rescind anything. I think you're fine. But you need to formalize what you started.
Sure.
Is what I would say.
Counselor Brown?
I support, I appreciate your words. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I support the first letter where it's essentially where it says provisional cash, land, site preparation. That's the one I, I support.
Counselor Court?
I don't care how we get it done, if we get it done. I, I do take a lumberage with the mayor putting the cart before the horse and saying, oh, we've got this $19,000, $19,000 square foot, millions and millions of dollars. No, my whole intent all along was, okay, the town is, we promise back in September, again in January, again in March, a million dollars, that's fine, whatever way it is, and let them raise what they can raise. And then we build what we can build. I'm not suggesting we build a $19,000 or square foot thing or anything.
I agree.
I'm suggesting that we tell them what we've got, we help them, they raise what they can, and we build what we can. That's what I've suggested all along. I've never ever said that we should go into debt billions of dollars for whatever. If they can't raise the money, then we don't do it. We give them a chance.
Agreed.
I appreciate that comment, Counselor.
I think we're good. So my, I only, it's only a logistical question, Jeff, because they're anxious to get a letter.
Yep.
And theoretically, we can't make a motion.
Yeah.
Make a recommendation. But can they move forward with the letter based upon our recommendation?
Well, I asked Brad and Lloyd if June 9th would be acceptable. And it seems it's okay.
Okay. Because I, I know they're worried because they have grant, a grant writer doing this for them.
Yes.
And they need to make sure that everything. But I don't know, can you say, well, you've got the versions, this is where we're, this is the one we're going to land on in a week from now.
Yeah. If she needs it to complete writing the grant, I can say, here's a draft. It'll be ratified on the 8th and I'll send you a formal one on the 9th. But you can get all your paperwork done. That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You want my opinion?
Well, you need to be in the.
Getting forgotten back here.
Who is that guy?
Oh, I'm not right there. I like the first letter that just doesn't, doesn't come up with dollar values for each item. I just, I agree with councillor Brown.
Yeah, I do too.
So councillor Selk, I would make a recommendation to council that we direct administration to refer to letter number one as the letter that allows for a million dollars with cash and in-kind to be forwarded to the association, the fundraising association.
The letter refers to cash, land, site preparation, utility services, and pavement.
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
So we have a motion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Good. Can we not talk about the rec facility?
It's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation, yeah, you're all good.
It's okay, but you still vote like a motion.
So can I ask, oh, sorry, councillor Brown, please go ahead.
So I just, I just have this question, because we're talking about the rec center. Sorry. But so we have, so I'm on two boards right now, or I'm on a few boards, but two in regards to rec. One is the rec, just recreation in regards to the town. The other one is the ad hoc rec. And so I guess my question is, so does that ad hoc rec board in regards to the facility, because that's why it was created, council had it created so that we could do the survey, all of the things to try and see if there was want and needs. So will that ad hoc committee continue on with the building and the, or is it done, I guess is my question?
Can I just clarify?
Yeah, please.
So are you suggesting that the ad hoc rec committee continue on with the fundraisers to move towards, or are you out with your money? What is this looking like? What is the facility? What's going to be in it, et cetera, et cetera?
Because that way, I can return and, then it's not hearsay. Then it's, you know, you're sitting at a council, and then I'm returning and reporting what I'm hearing. I just wondered what your thoughts were on that.
Mayor?
I have mixed feelings. The mixed feelings came because that ad hoc committee was not really allowed to function the way it was supposed to. So because it is such a large project, I'm almost wondering if administration should not be part of that, whichever committee it is that oversee all that. Because I really think if administration is not in the loop, it carries on being this one said, this one said, and it doesn't work for me. It really doesn't.
We did have, we did have Randy Russell, who is representing the town. I mean, he wasn't, he's not Jeff, but he's Jeff's right hand in regards to rec. So he did sit at our, I mean, he was on the ad hoc committee. I just, I'm just wondering, this committee, if it's done? And if we're finished with that, is there another one that will follow this through? So the next council, I just would like to have things in place so that when the next council comes, it can just smooth transition.
Jeff, can you give us a little bit of your best thinking on this one? But I really honestly believe that administration needs to be represented.
I support that.
Yeah.
Okay, so they were, but.
Yeah.
But indirectly, it was kind of.
Well, I don't want to be on another committee, I'm going to be honest. And I have to be able to assign staff to go to these things. I can't attend them all.
But didn't you? Like, isn't that what Randy?
And I felt I was informed.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I do think, I appreciate councillor Brown, that that group probably needs some clarity of what is the role for the next step.
That's where I'm at.
Because I don't know that that's clear, and we may need to just put our heads together. I'm not sure I'm prepared, Mayor, to tell you what I think right now.
I'm trying to understand the role myself.
Yeah. I think we might just want to get together and really decide what that should look like.
Thank you.
If I might, councillor Selk, I will also throw out, when I met with Lloyd Clark, there was some, we landed on nothing, by the way, but there was some discussion about, should there be some tie between the fundraising group that's a little more formalized as this proceeds? And maybe that's how this looks. But we should put our heads together on that.
I just thought, I thought it was, sorry. I just felt it was important to bring it up because I felt like that portion is done. Now it's a new, it's new, and I just wanted to make sure that this continues and is seamless. And we don't have the hearsay, that we have direction, and that we're all, that I can return and report to council on actual facts.
That committee's been idling in the driveway for months.
Yeah.
Correct.
And actually, council is represented on there because both councillor Brown and myself are on the ad hoc committee. So I would suggest there's probably a greater play that we can make there than what we have been doing going forward.
All right. Let's get together and figure that out. I'll make a note here to set something up, and we'll look at that bylaw and look at where it should go. Yeah, okay.
Awesome, thank you.
Everybody comfortable?
If I can ask a follow-up too, just for next meeting, and I hope I'm not opening a massive can of worms here. For next meeting, would you like a resolution prepared to change the designation for the money in the rec master plan reserves in 2021?
We should.
Yeah, I think you should, by the way. I think you should designate that for the indoor rec facility as the cash portion.
Or we do it, or we don't.
Okay, if I, I'll prepare that for next Tuesday? Okay.
Counter words, yes.
Okay, okay, good.
I'm going to open up a bigger can of worms.
You're going to, you said?
Sure.
Oh, here we go.
In our last meeting, I made reference to our audited financial statement and some money that was left over and was curious where it all went. And at that time, you didn't have an answer, because what I would suggest is if there's still money from that that was left over from our last fiscal year, that additional portion of that be set aside in that same reserve account.
So any surplus will be assigned, we assigned anything back to the department that it was generated from as closely as we, you know, in fairly round numbers, okay? So you should be able to see in all the additions to reserves in 2021 that that would equal the surplus from the year. One of the challenges, councillor Selk, is that sometimes when we know, for example, I'm trying to think if we had an example of it last year, that it was significant, not a minor one. The rec facilities were a reasonable one. If we knew revenue was going to be low, lower than we budgeted, we tried to make our expenses lower than we budgeted. So what you saw is the revenue and the budget stayed the same, but we knew it was coming in low, so we came in under in expenses to try and keep the margin roughly the same. But any surplus will be assigned to reserve accounts at the end of the year. Some of it will be brought forward into the next budget to fund items. So a very small example, just because councillor Brown and I were talking about it, is, no, powwow, actually, is a good example. So we didn't have it last year, so it was under budget technically, because we didn't spend any money. But we brought it forward to fund the 5,000 this year. So it came in as revenue to this account. So it went in and out of the reserve account as in from operating and then out to fund operating. So I wish I could just give you this really clean answer, councillor Selk, and I'm not trying to be evasive of the answer, it just, it's made up of a lot of things. But any surplus will be assigned back to its department. That would be my shortest answer for it.
Good, but there's some latitude in there.
Oh, I mean, it's at your discretion what to do with it, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, no, I'm not debating that at all, councillor.
Right, well, I guess we can further this discussion.
Okay, I'll bring the resolution at least to assign what's in rec reserves to the indoor facility. I mean, that gives you this massive amount to anchor that resolution, right? And then you can debate the use of some of the other accounts if you wish from there.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thanks, Jeff.
All right.
All right, 7B, you all have a draft letter. And Jeff, I know you have some background that you want to give to this letter.
Yeah, I got a call back from the MP's office.
Good.
So last week, you asked that we write a letter to the MP about the Medicine Line initiative. So Glenn actually phoned me before I got to him, and he said, hey, I'm trying to get this thing sorted. Tell me what you know about it, what's going on. And I said, well, actually, I have a resolution to send you a letter. And he says, well, don't send me a letter, I'm on side. Send it to the following four ministers. So that's why you see those there. He said, you need to send it to these four and CC me. And last Thursday, he said, the issue right now, he had talked to Browning, he talked to the Blackfeet Nation, and they said, no, we're back on for the 8th and 9th. But the Canadian government has not formally removed the requirement for 14-day quarantine if you go down. This was of last Thursday. And he says, that's what we need to fix. So when councillor Selk was in my office today, we phoned his office. He was out, but they got a hold of him. And the answer is, there's been no change since last Thursday. There is still not a formal position of the feds on removing the 14-day quarantine according to the MP Moats's office today.
Well.
So I think the letter is still relevant to send. I did find one spelling mistake in it, by the way. Form, I got that, I'll fix it.
Jeff, the only thing is, it's not dated, and maybe you want to add a date?
Yeah, sounds good. So I do think it's expedient that this is sent. And by the way, I would recommend, and I know this is unorthodox and not normally what I would do, but based on the timeliness of it, I think you make a recommendation to send the letter. You ratify it next week, but we send it tomorrow.
Okay. Mayor, I think you know what you're going to do, so.
Yeah, so I am recommending to council that we are sending the letter to Mr. Trudeau and different other honorable ministers to receive the letter regarding COVID and our frustration ASAP.
Perfect, thank you. All in favor?
Thank you.
Good. Good, thank you.
Yeah, we'll get it out tomorrow.
That's perfect, thank you. Thanks, administration as well.
Yes.
All right, 7D, 2021 community celebrations. Jeff?
7C, do you have?
Oh, yeah, 7C. This is just a bit of an update.
It's okay, just wondered.
This was about widening the street. We gave a letter to all the residents on that block. Well, there's a block and then a very short block, there's two more residents. We only received back four pieces of feedback, and one was in favor of removing the sidewalk to widen the street, and the other three were not. And for a variety of reasons, they wanted to keep a sidewalk in place, they didn't want to interfere with existing irrigation or shrubbery and different things. And they're all legitimate concerns. So as I've talked to Brandon, I mean, in a perfect world, you would make those streets symmetrical and widen them and do what you can. From the feedback we got, there isn't a big appetite from the residents to lose their sidewalk.
Yeah.
And I don't feel it's worth a battle with the residents in this case. I think that it's reasonable that if they're, if they understand that, you know, on-street parking in the winter is problematic a little bit, and they understand that. Councillor Selk brought up a good point today. It's one of our more normally sized streets, where the rest are incredibly, incredibly big. And so I don't think it's something we want to upset the neighborhood based on the feedback we've received, unless you feel strongly that you'd like to see us pursue that further. We're comfortable enough just leaving it status quo after construction.
I agree with that.
Sounds good. If everyone's okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, okay. Now, 2021 community celebrations. Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, typing my notes now.
Give us some context on this.
Well, and again, we just, this is going to be talked about a lot because we have some celebrations that would coincide two days after we would go into phase three. And so there's little things, and we say it in jest, but is it reasonable that two days after the pandemic lockdowns are lifted, we have 1,000 people at Party in the Park? You know, is that, should that be the first thing we dip our toe into? Is that a reasonable event? The other thing is, it's not obvious that stage three starts on June 28th. My guess is it's going to be on July 5th, because they want to get through the July long weekend. That's my guess, is that it'll be pushed. And you're already seeing some of that rhetoric in the communication that, you know, June 28th or early July, end of June or early July, you're starting to see that. Yeah, so I just wanted, we have to talk about this probably every week for the next three or four. I just wanted some feedback on your feeling on planning those types of events.
Eric?
Okay, Jeff, there is something that I find interesting from the provincial perspective. Every reopening has something to do with level of vaccination and hospitalization. Now, if the figures are still what they are, we are lagging behind in the vaccination department. I do not know where we stand, and I don't know where we will stand then. I hope it's enough of an incentive for people to realize they need to make time for vaccination to allow us to have a normal summer, more or less. So is there any way that we, as a town, want to look at that aspect also as part of our celebrations, considering that we're going to have hundreds of people lined up on a street in August? I'm just, I'm just throwing it out, it's not a popular idea. But we also, as a municipality, have some responsibility to our people, even health-wise.
Councillor Brown?
I mean, so I'm not speaking in regards to the Canada Day celebration.
That's a different story.
Yeah, I'm speaking in regards to the Heritage Week celebrations. And what I can tell you is, we are planning it very similar to what we did last year. I have talked to the Rotarians in regards to parade. And of course, that is all about where we're at. So how we're, how we're, how we're building Heritage Week, it's really safe, just like we did last year. Only, and if things are lifted, then we'll throw in a few other things. But I think the key is that we're doing something, and we're giving the community hope again. So I think it's important to do something. Does it have to be 1,000 people lined up? You know, maybe not, but I think it's important that we're doing something. That's my perspective.
Councillor Court, do you have a?
Yeah, I've just pulled up the premier's latest comments here. Second dose bookings will start in the next two weeks. Today, we had 209 new cases, and that's it. The way it's going right now, I don't see any reason why we can't have a normal August, quite frankly. I know we have to be a little bit careful, but everything's pointing to opening wide open by July 9th and the Calgary Stampede. I don't know why we're hiding all the time. We're way down in numbers, things are starting to get back to normal. Anyhow, that's my comment.
So councillor Brown, totally agree with you, we need to give people hope. I'm all for that. What I'm also for is the idea, can we have a Plan A and a Plan B? A Plan A is what you are planning, but can we have that Plan B if, or when is it too late to have a Plan B, which would mean to have, what you suggest, councillor Court, a full display of color in summer activities? That's what I'm wondering. When is a cutoff date?
Councillor Court, councillor Brown?
I agree with the mayor, I think there has to be two plans here. But I think we need a plan of thinking that there's going to be a parade, instead of there's not going to be a parade. And if it doesn't happen, then it doesn't happen. But right now, everything's pointing to, masks are gone by the 5th of July, everything's gone. So why are we still worried about people in a parade? And they won't even have masks that they have to worry about.
Well, I'll let councillor Brown talk.
So what I can tell you again is, we do have a Plan A and a Plan B.
Okay.
We are good to go. If in fact, we are, hallelujah, no more masks, and we have a mask-burning bonfire, great. And if not, it's on the list.
It's kind of a fun idea.
I know. With your fire crew there, of course. But Mayor, I can tell you, I'm on it. I have a Plan A, I have a Plan B, I've talked to the Rotarians, they're fully, I've talked to everyone on the list from last year. Again, I'm only speaking of Heritage Week because I have nothing to do with the Canada Day celebrations. But as far as Heritage Week goes in August, we have two plans in place. You're saying, when is it too late? Well, honestly, we could cancel the week before and change it if we need to. Really, we could.
So I think we're all comfortable with councillor Brown's handling of the Heritage Days. I think.
And councillor Court.
I think, I think we're comfortable with the way she's handling that, but it kind of boils back to July the 1st. And my suggestion to council would be. And my suggestion to council would be, let's have the fireworks and that's it.
Yeah.
We don't have a Party in the Park, we have the fireworks, everybody watches from their car anyway. And we're good. Mayor?
There is one more item. Councillor Brown, you were asking me about the power. And I was saying to councillor Brown, the issue is that normally it's in February when we meet as a power committee. And this year, after the change in election, we have not received a name or who is now our contact that would be on that committee. And we do not know who the person-at-large would be from the reserve. Therefore, no letter has been sent from the committee to the Blood Tribe to request funding because what we had been told previously was that the chance for having a full power, even in standoff, was still not a sure thing this year. So I do not know how they're going to go with it this year, I have no idea. So if that one was not going, the smaller one, then really disappears very rapidly. Therefore, we do not have the matching funding. So what I said to councillor Brown, yes, we can do a similar thing as what we did last year, which was well-received, which is a demonstration power, which limits the amount of gift money that we need. Therefore, how do we do it? The question came from David Innes, trying to understand where the money's coming from. And then we know that a portion came from your fund. And last year, we dipped into our reserve to kind of substitute or add on to what was lacking. It's a little bit of a logistics story because we need approval from the members of the Blood Tribe that were on that council to be able to disperse funds of that account. Because it's not a town account, it's a committee account. So I'm going to work on that.
Thank you.
And hopefully this week I have an answer for you.
Thank you.
We will, we will leave it in your capable hands, mayor.
And you were telling me you're looking at about $700, about what we?
Last year, that's, when I talked to Jeff, that was our understanding.
And from last year, we took it from our reserve, we didn't take it from the $5,000. We took it from a grant money, a grant fund that we, the town wrote.
Yes, that's right.
But it is yet gifted to both the town and the reserve regardless.
Okay.
Councillor Court?
Just a concern for councillor Brown, I know she'll have the answer for me. The rodeo, we can't just cancel that or turn that on in a week or a week off. Anything ongoing with the rodeo?
So councillor Drew is looking into it, and he's getting back to council.
Yeah, we have a meeting next week, so.
Thank you, that was my only concern, because some things you can shut off, other things.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So just right now, there are some exemptions, but there's still, by, well, again, by August, we should be able, if they're having the Calgary Stampede.
Yeah, they are.
You know, we should be able to.
Ish, you're right.
But by August, we should have, be able to do something, but.
Okay, go ahead, councillor Brown, and then Jeff.
But also, I mean, the AgroDome last year did do some things, and that worked well. So I mean, again, that could be our option A and our option B, right? We know what worked last year, and they were able to function and did a great job, but we need an A and B. And I do, councillor Court, thank you for bringing that up, because it is important. It's not like, you know, people are gonna book hotels, and like, we can't just cancel at the last minute, you're right. The rodeo will be a little bit different, but councillor, if you can just get back to us as soon as you know, and then we can go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, good, Jeff?
I just want to point out something, you mentioned the vaccination numbers locally, and there's a problem with them. And I've, this has been, we've sent this, James and McGrath and I have both sent this. We asked Alberta Emergency Management to send it up the pipe today, AHS. So what's happening, if you go look on the vaccination map, it's going to tell you, I haven't looked today, but it's gonna tell you something that we're at about 32% or 5,300 first-dose vaccinations. Well, if 32% represents 5,300 people, 100% represents 16,600.
So which number are those?
The problem with 16,600 is the population of the town, the county, McGrath and the villages is 10,000. So what they're doing is they're including the population of the Blood Tribe, but not including the 3,800 vaccinations they've given on the Blood Tribe. If they included, and I think I have this correct, I did get an email back from Alberta Health saying, yeah, we don't include any of the vaccinations from the First Nations because they don't break them down the same way we do, and they're reported federally, and I said, fine, just take their population out of the number. Because we'll jump to almost 60% from 32.
Well, that's definitely a better number.
It's not being understood. We have this major problem with everyone, so I've asked, I've asked different parties to try and help, that there is a problem with the reporting because of how they're grabbing the data. So either we divide 5,300 and whatever by 10,000, or we divide 5,300 plus the 3,800 vaccines by 16,600.
Right.
But we have the worst of both worlds. We're using the low vaccination number and the high population number.
Because right now, according to this record, 63% of Albertans have had police.
Right.
Yeah, but.
Right.
That's two-thirds.
But thanks to the aggressive nature of the Blood Tribe in handling vaccinations, it actually pushes our numbers to probably one of the highest jurisdictions in the province. But right now, we're one of the lowest.
Interesting.
So we just gotta get that figured out, so don't put a lot, in my opinion, a ton of stock in that number just yet.
Okay, fair enough.
Good, you good?
It's good.
All right. Are we good with Community Celebrations? Jeff, you got what you need to?
Well.
Or what, do you want to get the flavour of council?
What are thoughts on Party in the Park? Go ahead, we have to order fireworks this week, by the way. So should we try and do a fireworks show?
Okay.
Yes.
Just before we, just before we do this, okay? I think we kind of settled on, and maybe I'm misreading this, but let's have the fireworks on July the 1st, and that's it. No Party in the Park, we're just gonna all sit in our cars and enjoy the fireworks and eat popcorn and call it a day.
Yep, we'll plan accordingly.
Yeah, I feel comfortable with that personally, let's be a little bit more cautious this year.
Everyone else, the rest of the council, you're good with that?
Yep.
Councillor Barnes?
Yep.
Okay, good.
You would make us laugh, my friend.
We're having a party at Storage.
Well, we need a little bit of laughter.
Clearly, we're having a party at Storage Wars at councillor Barnes's place.
Betcha.
Okay, Dave.
Barbecue my house.
Okay. 7E, items from economic development and tourism, and I guess I'm speaking to those. You have a letter that was suggested that we craft, and we talked about it a week ago about talking to the Minister of Advanced Education about we need to have a more robust veterinary program at the University of Calgary. Mayor?
Councillor, no, Mr. Chair. I really honestly believe there should be a CC to Mayos and Reeve, and a CC to AUMAT, and a CC to RMA.
RMA.
RMA, right. Okay, because there is no reason why we cannot collectively put a little bit of pressure on this item. And honestly, if we may as well do it also for RMLA, because it should know that we're frustrated.
My only, I agree with the mayor, and my only comment to Jeff about the letter was, it's good, but it's not that there's a shortage, it's just that there are a lack of seats in general. There's only 30 seats in the program at the U of C, and that's like a drop in the bucket with respect to what the need is for veterinarians all across the country, but particularly in the province of Alberta. So therefore, it should be a more robust program. Jeff?
I didn't have a chance to amend that between then and now, but if council supports it, we'll amend it by next week when you ratify it.
Okay, so.
So you want the first sentence to be a little bit stronger, strongly worded?
And, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It needs to be a more robust program, not that it's, there needs to be about 50 seats or something. I won't put a number on it, but you know what I'm getting at, so. So we would entertain a motion to recommend that we draft that letter. Councillor Barnes?
I can make that motion.
Councillor Barnes, you're making that motion?
I'd love to make that motion.
Okay.
But we draft the letter, send to the Minister of Advanced Education regarding increasing the number of seats for veterinary students in our province.
Okay, so councillor Barnes has made a recommendation with that later, letter, all in favor?
As an aside, did you find another veterinarian?
I don't think so.
He's been advertising for weeks.
I know, but there is a shortage all across Alberta, and a burnout rate apparently higher than we ever seen it in this province.
And it's unfortunate.
Many people are living in the profession, burnt out. Terrible.
Okay. Item two under E, mystery tourism, you all have that in your council package. Angel brought this to the Economic Development Committee.
Very interesting.
And it's almost like an escape room, but it's an escape from your town. And it was brought to the committee, they looked it over, they thought, well, this is a unique way of having people either come to town or do things in town. So I guess it's there as a discussion from council, do you want to, mayor?
So I looked at it, and I looked at, okay, what's in force and how much would that cost us? And so I looked at it, and I mean, the highest level is $5,000 to the town. That you can recoup if you put a fee on entrance to that, or you can do it as a way to attract people. The other one is 3,000, and the other one, I don't remember, 1,000. But I think that 5,000 is actually a fairly reasonable to bring us to, for interest to the town. Maybe it's worth suspending, I don't know.
I can say, mayor, that that's kind of the feeling of the Act Dev Committee was that if you went to that level, we probably wouldn't charge people to go into that app, but they would just use it. And then in subsequent years, it depends upon the usage, is what they will charge you for ongoing costs.
Yeah, and the sharing of the revenue apparently.
What I would suggest is that, Jeff, maybe Angel could research this some more and come back with. I think it has a favorable feeling here amongst council, if I'm reading this right, everybody's okay. So maybe we can entertain a recommendation to administration to research this further.
Make that recommendation.
Councillor Court is making a recommendation that we research this further. All in favor? Thank you.
Can I?
Go ahead, mayor.
I just was wondering if Angel could figure out if that has been put in place somewhere in which community, and if there, what the feedback has been. I'll be curious to know, because there was no mention.
There is a number of them in Alberta, but I'll find out who they are.
Yeah, there was no mention and no source to go to, so I was curious to know.
Perfect, good. The business arising, I think we handled it, administration's gonna work with Danny and mayor.
Do we need a recommendation to recommend for administration to change the wording linked to the business licence?
If I might, mayor, let us work through, so I'll give you a scenario. If our other partners don't want to go to mandatory annual inspections, then I think we should explore the business licence option.
Yes.
If everybody's keen, then we really don't need to do it, it's mandatory anyway.
Get you, totally understood.
Okay.
So administration will work through that. Awesome. Questions from anyone in council?
Councillor Selk, I'll give you an answer that you didn't ask during the meeting. There was some concern from the councillors about irrigation at the golf course. I texted Paul and I said, hey, how's it going? And he says it's been running good since 1 o'clock, and we'll see how the night goes. So they've been running it now for five hours.
I got the phone call in the morning, so that's good to hear.
Yeah, so hopefully we're past it now and we're moving ahead, so. That was just a few minutes ago, they've been running it since 1, he said.
Thank you. Councillor Brown and then the mayor.
Sorry, it's not in regards to that, thank you, by the way, it's good to know. I did want to thank administration for lowering the flag.
Yeah.
I thought that was very respectful, and council hugely supported it because we had all talked about it on Sunday. So I just wanted to say thank you for proceeding with that.
Yeah, I mean, this is a pivotal, it's a pivotal event in the recognition of, I mean, we know residential schools have had a terrible impact on the country and our Indigenous population. This is a pivotal event in raising that awareness, right? So we decided it would probably be supported by council to get those flags down Monday morning. We're gonna keep them down for 215 hours, so they'll go back up next Wednesday likely.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I have a question for you, Jeff. I see that things are progressing with our Nitsitapi monument.
Mm-hmm, I was going to talk about that.
All of those things, that, again, it has to do with missing and murdered Indigenous women and with massacre on.
Well, and the monument's residential school recognition.
It's residential schools, so all of this seems to be coming together in a timely manner because of the things that we've found out this past week.
Yeah.
Now.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Regarding that very thing, the land has been blessed by the elders. And they want to have the unveiling at the end of June?
Yeah, we're seeing if we can coordinate it around National Indigenous Members' Day or National Aboriginal Day. I can't remember what they call it, but it's on the 21st.
Right.
Now, restrictions may be a little open. We've been talking about maybe doing the Blackfoot Confederacy flag raising on the 21st, because we could do that with a small crowd and record it, and we may want more people. There's been so many students and people involved in the monument, we may just want to give that till we can have a bigger crowd. I'm leaving that with the committee of kids and Cara largely, to see what they decide. But we are looking to see if we can do a June 21st event this year, if we can get an elder here to do a flag raising of the Blackfoot Confederacy flag, so we're working towards that too.
With respect to the monument, Jeff, trying to do that by the 21st, I would suggest that's pushing it to make it look all nice and pretty.
I know, I know. One of the challenges we do have with the site is that, to be frank, the fundraising outside of our grant writing didn't get much uptake. And so we're trying to get it there and in place on a bit of a shoestring.
Right.
So we got enough to pay for it, and our guys are gonna try and do the concrete work, and we're probably gonna bring millings in at this point in time to make some pathways, but we're gonna have to work on that over some years. It's gonna go in on a budget. I mean, it's a $68,000 monument, that's not on a budget, but the rest is gonna be pretty modest right now.
Okay, fair enough. Councillor Brown?
The Blood Tribe support this?
All right. Anything else, council? Well, let's move on to number nine correspondence. You have a litany of letters again to the province regarding the RCMP. I think the mayor has addressed this on numerous occasions about not having the study back from.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yes, so I think we're all in agreement that we're going to hold our powder until we actually get a chance to see the report. Am I misrepresenting that?
Exactly right.
Good.
Can I talk about the next item? The item that Tanya Thome included, which is the Economic Resiliency and Recovery Task Force, is an excellent document. And I was saying to Jeff, I really would like council to have a chance to look at it a little bit closely because there are some recommendations inside there that might be useful to us as a town. And so I was wondering if we could maybe look at it in one of the summer sessions, you know, in July or August, whenever there is time, and give a little bit more, you know, time to digest what's inside there. It's worth a read. Honestly, I have tons of points inside there, and I'm thinking, man, it's a good document.
They, they've got, they had some really good people on the committee, and they put a lot of thought into it, so.
Well, it shows, it really does, there is some depth of analysis that is really useful even to a small town like ours. that is really useful even to a small town like ours.
And clearly, I'm happy to see that, would appear that Tanya Thorne is running again for.
I hope she runs for president.
Well, she says she's going to be co-chairing the 2021 convention, so clearly she's running again.
But I hope she's running for more than that.
I would agree.
She would be the president we need right now.
Hey, anything else from the correspondence? If not, then we'll enter into closed session. Councillor Drew?
Got motion to go into closed session?
All in favor? Thank you, Corey. Thank you for coming.